Okay, I called order the May 8th, 2025 Hot Springs Planning Commission meeting. We will start with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Scott will lead us in the invocation and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance, of allegiance just after that.
Shall we pray? Gracious God, our Lord, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for this opportunity to sit and listen and decide things concerning your city and your citizens. We pray that, Lord, you will give us the wisdom to make good decisions that benefit us all, not only now, but in the long run. Bless us as we go forward. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Stouter, could you please call the roll?
Raymick?
Here.
Gerke?
Present.
Walker?
Present.
Val?
Here.
Lamond?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Stafford?
Here.
Okay, now we going forward to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. I'll just note that item number five on the published agenda has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will have four items, one on the consent agenda. So I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I first would move we approve the minutes of the prior meeting.
You're exactly right. I skipped that. Thank you, Bill.
That's a motion.
May I get a motion for the approval of the minutes from last meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I move approval of this agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks for saving us some time on that. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. The first item of business is the consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations?
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Director Selman, could you please present the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. We have one item on the consent agenda, and that is lot split number 25-038, the Brook-Holden Minor Subdivision, to replant Lot 1 of the Bonham Subdivision into two lots. This application meets the requirements. Both proposed lots meter exceed the minimum lot area and setback requirements for the RN Zone District. Both have direct access to an improved public street. Utilities are available, and the recommendation is for approval with one condition, that the plat must be filed with the Garland County Circuit Clerk's Office, and a recorded copy shall be returned to the Planning Department within 30 days of the Planning Director's execution thereof, or this approval will become null and void.
Okay, very good. Mr. Stouter, could you please take role on the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approved.
Raymick?
Approve.
Gerke?
Approve.
And Stafford?
Approve.
No.
Okay. Okay.
It comes, it comes over on the broadcast. Yeah.
All right, so next we move forward to new business. So Director Selman, could you please introduce the first item on the new business?
Yes, thank you. The second item tonight is rezone 25-041 at 223 Civic Street. This is a zone change request from RN5, that's residential neighborhood 5, to CBD, which is our downtown business district for property at 223 Civic Street.
Okay, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not mean that you're necessarily in favor of an application. May I please have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
So move.
Say it. All right, so Director Selman, could you please present the staff report on this item?
Thank you. The applicant is Mr. Charles Shredder, represented by Jonathan Martin, attorney, who is representing the property owner, Earl Gill Enterprises Incorporated. The request is for Central Business District zoning for approximately .18 acres of land located at the corner of Civic Street and Convention Boulevard. It's currently zoned RN5 and has a future land use classification of residential medium high. It's in Board of Directors District Number 1. This site is west and across Convention Boulevard from the City of Hot Springs Convention Center. It's north and across Civic Street from the Sentinel Record Newspaper Office. The property has approximately 81 feet of street frontage on Civic and approximately 85 on Convention Boulevard. The surrounding property zoning on the west is CBD, Central Business District, south also CBD, north RN5, residential neighborhood 5 district, and east also RN5. Adjacent and nearby land uses include but are not limited to the Convention Center, multifamily residential, local newspaper office, government building, hotel, and religious institution. The Central Business District is intended to accommodate the most intense mixed-use development within the City of Hot Springs. The CBD district comprises a predominantly vertically mixed-use environment focused on creating a vibrant pedestrian-oriented active downtown. District standards are oriented toward achieving a high quality of design and encouraging building forms that complement the area's existing urban fabric.
Okay.
I have a little bit more. The finding is that the property's future land use classifications of residential medium high is not consistent with the requested Central Business District zoning, and therefore a future land use plan map amendment to linear commercial corridor is recommended, which would support the requested CBD zoning. A future land use plan map designation of linear commercial corridor would be consistent with other adjacent Central Business District zone properties to the west and south, as well as in the core downtown area. The finding with regard to the zoning request is that the applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. The recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map by designating the subject property CBD, Central Business District, because the change demonstrates compatibility with the surrounding development and zoning and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, and also to amend the future land use plan map to designate the property linear commercial corridor. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, so it looks like the applicant has already come forward. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, Dr. Stafford.
Well, just, just let us know if there's anything else you'd like to add. You've got five minutes.
Sure. Thank you. Again, I'm Jonathan Martin. I'm the attorney for the applicants in this, in this matter. 1103 Higdon Ferry is my address here in town. And really, part of the, the impetus for this application is we've got essentially a commercial property that's now part of a, there are in five district, and both with the size and layout, there's, all the buildings are built at street level. It'd make it very prohibitive for any kind of residential use. My understanding is this property is under contract contingent to the zoning change, and I think this is a good opportunity to kind of revitalize a part of Convention Boulevard, to dress up this part of town, and I would think that this might be the closest property that the commissioners will, will get to consider, because it's literally block up the street. This property's been, for a long time, known as the corner bar, and I don't know exactly what the future plans are with it, but the commercial designation would seem to fit with the adjoining, considering the Convention Center and any proposed uses along that, among those lines. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I believe I have one of the applicants here as well that could also answer questions at the commission's behest.
Okay, is there anyone signed up to speak on this item? No? Okay. In that case, I guess the public discussion on the item is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions? As the owner, what do you intend to do with the property?
Revitalize it. First of all, I, just March of '22, I purchased the Hot Springs High School, and that place has pretty much gone. Couple apartments, some of the smaller houses are leaving, so I'll make it great. It was a bar before, so this is not like it was never commercial. Basically, Mr. Gill was sick, the owner of the bar died, and they didn't do their business license. So since they didn't do the business license, we could have continued to have it a bar. So now we're having, spending all our time going over this, sorry, for a hundred people. But anyway, so just make it good, change it, maybe make it alley, not 100% sure I'd like to have it back. It's a ghost kitchen, do some catering, just make it better, look, improve the outside, cut the trees down, fix it up. There's trees on the roof, the roof's sticky. It's a disaster inside.
Sir, could I get you to give your name and address for the record, just so we keep our...
My name is Charles Shredder, I live at 125 Oak Street.
Okay. I actually had a question on this one, is, as far as the CBD, is that, in the, in the case of the, the Planning Department, is that the most, or is that the best one? I, I thought about a commercial transitional or something, I mean, is there another designation that offers the flexibility that the owner is looking for that would be more appropriate? It just...
Probably not.
Okay.
There is, that is the downtown zoning, so as you head toward downtown, there's CBD. If you go across Convention, there is also CBD zoning, and this, this provides for a mixed-use type of flexible redevelopment for the area. I mean, we, we have spoken with the applicant many times about the options, and this really does seem to be the zone that hits the spot.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, in that case, Mr. Stouter, could you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Val?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approved.
Raymick?
Approve.
Gerke?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve. Okay.
Okay. The recommendation is for approval. Final decision will be made by the Board of Directors at their June 3rd meeting in this room, 6:00 PM.
All right.
Thank you.
Director Selman, could you please introduce the next item?
Thank you. The next item is also a rezone, number 25-048. The land is located at approximately 175 Wayne Place and is a request from Rural Residential, RR, to CTR Commercial Transitional for property located there. The applicant is Mr. Matthew Johnson. He is asking for CTR zoning for approximately 2.2 acres of land located at Wayne Place south of Spring Street. Subject property is currently zoned rural residential, has manufactured home overlay on it, has an industrial future land use plan map classification, and is in Board of Directors District Number 1. The surrounding property zoning to the west is industrial mixed-use and residential neighborhood 1. To the south is rural residential, to the north is industrial mixed-use, and to the east is industrial mixed-use. Adjacent and nearby land uses include but are not limited to industrial, residential, single-family, and undeveloped residential land.
Okay.
What? I have a little more.
Okay, did we get the motion to approve on the floor?
Did we? Oh, no. No.
Just... Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve to get the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not necessarily mean that you're in favor of an application, so can I get a, a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
So move. Second.
Okay, very good.
That's great. Thank you.
You bet.
All of the things I said are still true, and as far as the application, there are three findings with regard to this. It does demonstrate compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. The CTR Zone District would provide a buffer between surrounding residential and industrial zoning and uses. It is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. Ordinance number 6513, Section 5.1, Purpose, notes that the CTR Zone supports low-intensity uses that provide a transition between residential neighborhoods and higher intensity commercial or mixed-use areas, and this standard is met. The future land use plan map designation is industrial, not residential. The applicant states that CTR is more consistent with a non-residential zone than a residential one, and this standard is met. If rezone to CTR, this property would be afforded the complete list of permitted and conditional uses as detailed in Ordinance number 6513, Article 8, Table 8-1, Use Matrix. The findings are, with regard to the future land use plan map, the future land use classification of industrial is not entirely supportive of CTR zoning. Therefore, a future land use plan map amendment, commercial enclave, is recommended, which would support the requested CTR zoning. The finding with regard to the zoning map is that the applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. Recommendation to Planning Commission is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map by designating the subject property CTR, Commercial Transitional District, because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, and to amend the future land use plan map to designate the property commercial enclave. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director Selman. Could I get the applicant to come forward and give your name and address for the record? And please let us know if there's anything else you'd like to add. You've got five minutes.
My name's Matthew Johnson. I live at 4407 Airport Road. It's actually in Piercey, Arkansas. I purchased the property last year. I haven't even owned it a year. I started a lot split in November. It took until February to do the lot split. I actually, we actually split the land up right at the zoning change. At the time, I actually owned Wayne Place there at the end. I dedicated Wayne Place to the City of Hot Springs, and we split it right there at the zoning, because the left side was M1 when I bought it, and the right side was rural residential, I believe. And we split it right at the middle. Everything was finalized in February, and then we sold the residential side, because I wasn't using that side. I actually bought, I actually bought 15 acres over there last year, and it was three partials. Two of them were M1, and then March 1st came, all my M1 on that one side turned to rural residential, and then my M1 where my shop is changed to light industrial. So I got two different zonings for the exact same one, which I've talked with Rick and Kathy and everybody, and they said that CTR would be equivalent to what I had.
Okay. Very good. Is there, I think, looks like we have somebody signed up to speak on this item?
You do. My name is Vern Pahn.
Could you please come forward?
I guess I'll go back.
Oh, yeah.
Vern Pahn, I live at 2123 Spring Street. I was more curious on, it's not on the side of the hill there, is it? You know, you wanted to put, place the business in there? You know, if you're facing it, and you're looking to the left, you're looking towards Cutter Morning Star. The pictures aren't very clear that you're showing.
The property is not usable.
Yeah, down on the hill there, that's what I was curious about, right there. You're going to be putting it on the left-hand side?
Yeah, right there, that picture.
Residential or commercial?
At the time, I don't know.
So right now, it's just open in the air?
Basically, I bought it, and I feel like I kind of lost my value in changing from residential to residential overnight.
So you're trying to keep it open from residential to commercial?
To CTR, to equivalent to what I had, to what I purchased just several months before the change.
So you're trying to get it changed back to what it was?
No equivalent. What it was is no longer.
Right.
It would be the equivalent of what it was previously.
So basically, you're either going to have a business or residential there on that left-hand side, as you're facing towards Cutter Morning Star.
He's not proposing a specific development at this time.
He's wanting to leave it open, that's what I initially asked, so... Okay, so basically, right now, it's still up in the open, unless you're, until you change your mind, or either yea or yea.
There is, there is no development plan under consideration, if that's what you're asking.
Correct.
This is just for zoning, not a particular use?
Yeah, I was just more concerned about some of the animals that live in the area down there. I've seen a mountain lion. I know there's a elk down in there, hangs around in there, and I do often hear gunshots along the creek down in there. So my, one of my biggest concern, and the fact that I've had several of my cats shot. Somebody in that area there is, anyway, this is beside the point, but, you know, they did all this before Christmas.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not something we can address here, but...
They were fixed animals, you know, we were trying to find homes for them. I let them out periodically, and, you know.
Okay.
But anyway, I was just more concerned about the wildlife in the area, because it's just open game down in there. You see dead deer all the time, and raccoons, and possums, and turtles. I kind of like the nature myself, birds and the bees, but if it's going to be left in the open, there's nothing I can really say about it.
At this point...
So they're going to have another meeting later on at some time?
Depends on what the use might be.
Okay. I have no objections at this time, then.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so public discussion on the item is, is now closed. Any questions from commissioners? Yeah. Okay, in that case, Mr. Stouter, could you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approved.
Raymick?
Approve.
Gerke?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Approved.
The recommendation to the board is for approval, and the board will consider this on June 3rd in this room at 6:00 PM.
All right. In that case, Director Selman, could you please introduce the next item?
Yes, and I have drawn a line under the introduction.
Move approval of the...
Not yet.
Yep.
The application is to rezone. It is application number 25-047 at 413 Hammond Drive. This is a zone change request from residential neighborhood five to general commercial for a property that is developed at that address.
All right, very good. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not necessarily mean you're in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
Second.
Very good. Director Selman, could you please present the staff report on the item?
I'm happy to do that, thank you. The applicant is Mrs. Lindsay Landrum, representing property owner Gardner Methodist Church. The request is for CG, General Commercial District zoning for approximately .82 acres of land located at 413 Hammond Drive. Currently zoned residential neighborhood five, the future land use classification is residential medium-high. It's located in Board of Directors District Number Three. The surrounding property zoning to the west is residential neighborhood five, to the south is CG, General Commercial District, to the north RN5, and to the east RN5. Adjacent and nearby land uses include but are not limited to condominium complex, retail center, adult and alternative learning campus, office buildings, undeveloped land, and the The findings on this request are that the property's future land use classifications of residential medium-high is not consistent with the requested CG zoning. Therefore, a future land use plan map amendment to Community Commercial Center is recommended, and this would support the requested General Commercial District zoning. A future land use plan map designation of Community Commercial Center would be consistent with other adjacent CG, General Commercial District, zone properties to the south, southeast, and southwest along Airport Road. With regard to the zoning map amendment, the finding is that the applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for a favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. Recommendation is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property CG, General Commercial District because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, and to amend the future land use plan map to designate the property Community Commercial Center. And that concludes the presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Director Selman. Could the applicant please come forward? Give your name and address for the record, and please let us know if there's anything you'd like to add, and you've got five minutes.
I'm Ethan Landrum. I'm Lindsay Landrum's husband. She's out of town on business, so I'm going to do the best I can to just, I guess, I've never done this before, so what we plan on doing, you know, is turn that old church into like a small little venue area, you know, people can do like little, small, like classes for kids or whatever, and even do like a small wedding chapel, like elopements and stuff like that. And that's what, you know, our idea is, and one side will be, she's a photographer, so, you know, one side will be studio for her and whatnot. So, I mean, I don't, that's it, I guess.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
Appreciate the information.
You bet.
Is there anyone signed up to speak on this one? No? No one signed up to speak? So thank you for your input, and the public comments are closed. And commissioners, do you have any questions?
Did y'all buy the church?
Not yet. It's contingent on if it gets approved for rezoning, but we have not purchased it yet, no ma'am.
But the Methodist church is selling it?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay. In that case, Mr. Stoudt, could you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Davis?
Approved.
Ramek?
Approved.
Kirky?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Val?
Approved.
Lamond?
Approved.
Stafford?
Approved.
Okay, the recommendation is to approve. A final decision will be made by the Board of Directors on June 3rd, and their meeting will be in this room at 6:00 PM on June 3rd.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet.
All right. So now, we are at the director's report. Director Selman?
My report is that now we need to talk about what we didn't finish talking about at our work session. And that is, I think, what are the specific things that need Camero's attention so that we can get a new draft and find, hopefully, that we're ready to take this for a recommendation on June 10, 12? In June, our June meeting. And that's not like a drop-dead thing.
Yeah.
So...
But we should probably make it a drop-dead thing, because I'm conscious of the amount of work that we have to do.
We do.
For the other items that we committed to.
That might be the 17th, maybe?
Or the 12th? No, would be the 17th, wouldn't it?
Well, we've got the 3rd on, that's the first Tuesday. The 10th would be the 2nd, the 17th would be the 3rd, and the 24th would be the 4th.
Okay, and we meet on the 2nd Thursday?
A planning commission, yes. It is the 12th.
Okay, June 12th. So we have four weeks to get it together, and we should probably call that three weeks because we have to get everything finished up and pack it ready to go.
Well, given that, I mean, we came into this work session, I really thought we were going to wrap the landscape plans up. But, I mean, there's some, obviously, some legitimate concerns we've got to address, but it just kind of illustrates, I guess, that, okay, we're going to have to probably make some time in between now and the next meeting, if the commissioners are willing to do that. You want to...
So your next step is to go to Camero's with it?
Yep. We need to get them to look at their math on that table that is greatly puzzling.
Yeah.
And to maybe make some modifications to the illustrations that we had in the early part here. It's our fair buffer, and we need to ask them to put in language about the discretion of the urban forester. I know Rick has probably far more notes than I do.
The three-foot rule?
The three-foot, yeah.
How quickly do they normally respond?
You know, fast.
Okay.
I think we have this, did we have this back in a week, Don?
Yeah, it was pretty quick.
Yeah, they turned it around very quickly.
Could we schedule a session a couple of weeks out, then?
Sure.
Give them enough time to respond to us, and then hopefully get to a point where we're...
Get it wrapped up.
Ready to wrap up landscape?
Does that work for the rest of you and our alternates?
I guess the only question in my mind is, did we get to, you know, are there any other questions any other commissioners have? Do we, and it seems like we have two choices, we can have another meeting to go through it, or perhaps we can just, if you want to expedite it, we can send in questions to the staff and say, you know, here's a change we would, here's a change we would like, or here's something we'd like clarified, or a drawing done.
I like the way you think, Bill. This is, yeah.
Yeah, but I think it also is important that we get it right. We need to take time to get it right, and...
Yeah, but we can do it in a parallel way instead of serial, the way we've been doing. So, yeah, maybe whenever Camero's gets the draft back with the stuff that we've talked about already.
Okay.
That you could send it out, and we commit to getting our comments back, you know, within a few days. And I guess we still need to have a formal approval of what's being produced here for landscape by the planning commission, so maybe we can do that, you know, plan to have everything wrapped up and do that before a work session for science.
Okay. If we send it to them tomorrow, which we will, and we get it back out to you next week, which should be reasonable, and then we ask for comments by what this is, the 8th, if we ask for comments by the 20, well, the 22nd would be two weeks. How long do you need to look and comment?
Couple of days.
Couple of days?
No more than a week.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got bulk of it done, so...
We do.
Yeah.
So I think that if we can respond to you in a couple of days on our bounce on it, I think that would be sufficient.
Work for the people over here and the alternates, too?
So where are we going back to, to review?
What we will have is a new draft from Camero's.
From the beginning.
From the beginning of this, so that's 14 pages. Right.
A new draft of the whole thing with everything we've talked about this time.
Right.
We still didn't get through the whole thing, though, in this discussion, so that means we will need to...
Well, it's only a few more pages, right?
Yeah.
Because we didn't get to 98, I remember, and then we didn't look at the type, didn't
we, well, we got to 97, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't really talk about 98. But 99, we did sort of with the urban fore, I mean, because he talked about the trees and...
Yeah.
So there was scats about different...
Yeah, we didn't talk about landmark tree conservation.
Mm-hmm.
And as a concept, that's something, it's kind of big. You know, what, the way this is written, it's written to preserve and enhance the city's tree canopy, and it requires where preservation is not feasible, that trees removed must be replaced on site with a comparable native tree that will reach the same size at maturity.
So that would mean that if a tree was taken downtown, taken out because it died or whatever, then another tree just like it would be planted with the intent that it would grow just like the other tree?
Yep, not just downtown, but anywhere.
But anywhere.
Yep, anywhere where there is a landmark tree. And a landmark tree is any tree 24 inches or more in diameter at breast height, so at four and a half feet from the ground, that tree would have to be a minimum of 24 inches in diameter to be a landmark tree. A tree smaller than that would not fall into this regulatory category.
But we don't know all the landmark trees.
We do not. It would be when someone...
Alan said he had a list of them.
He did say he had a list.
Yeah.
Well, I'm confident in Alan, too, to take care of lots of stuff, anyway. He's very professional and seems very knowledgeable about trees.
So does it become the owner's responsibility at that point?
If it's on private property, it is the owner.
Janice, are you thinking that we would go through the rest of these points now, or what?
It won't take that long, will it?
That's the only thing, only thing I had marked for further discussion was questions about the landmark tree, the tree removal.
What was, what were you thinking?
Well, again, where you were talking about the definition of a landmark tree on page 13.
I just read it.
Yeah, so for clarification.
And Kathy?
It has to meet...
At least...
Two requirements, the size, and secondly, listed, and it can be listed one of two places, the registry or the city's, state national registry or the city's registry. And then the rest of it about historical significance relates to, I guess, the registration.
Mm-hmm.
So really, it's just size and registration, it's one of those registries are the requirements. And again, maybe, again, it's just a matter of how that's worded, is, I had to read that three times to determine that what I just said is there are two requirements and three ways to do it, so...
Well, what do you want it to be listed?
I'm okay with it, but I might send you some wording changes if it helps, and I don't think we need a lot of discussion. I don't even desire to change it.
In that case, unless there are specific, you know, material items that are of concern, can we just do the rest of the evaluation and comments via email?
If that's what I was trying to say earlier.
Yeah.
If anybody has anything else, send it to the staff and say, here's an issue, and then the staff can absorb that.
Yeah.
And again, they can come back with those issues with Camero's revision, if Camero's can take that into consideration.
So when you were talking about what you said, did you want it over in definitions?
No, I just find some of the wording is, sometimes the wording is a little bit of a struggle to really understand what it is saying, and so I will send you a clarification on that definition.
Sure.
I mean, some, a lot of it's, I mean, for just people who are trying to do it, I think it's going to be a struggle. I mean, even if it's as clear as you can make it, I still think that you, as a person, should still, that's just my opinion, ask questions because you still may not get it.
And I don't want to throw stones at anybody, but it almost seems that the, this ordinance doesn't seem to have a voice. When you have, when you have a document that's written, the guy that taught me what I know, and I'm not a great writer, but he talked about giving a voice to it, and it seems like this is two or three voices. It's written in a style of the old ordinance, and maybe some staff comments, and some of our comments, and Camero's comments, and so, again, it's just not as clean and clear to me.
Because of size.
And maybe that's the one thing I would ask, if, maybe Camero's can try to give it that voice, because they did a great job on the zoning code. Zoning code came to us, you know, much cleaner and easier to understand. So, again, without saying... So, again, without saying, without saying anybody did anything wrong, I think we can, I think they can improve it if we ask them to.
Just not quite there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, as new Pope said today, we should work as one.
Well, there you go.
Before that.
So be it.
Yeah.
Amen.
Should we make sure to copy the other commissioners on any comments?
No, no.
No?
No, you cannot do that.
Okay.
You cannot do that.
So you may have to deal with some duplication.
We...
Okay.
We will compile it.
Okay.
We can send out all the comments so that you have all of them, but you cannot send them to one another.
Got it.
Thank you. Cone of silence, yes.
Chairman Stafford, I think what we can do, in my mind, is, I send a comment to her, and she may call and say, well, you know, I think it's this and that, and, and then I say, okay, well, I'm good with that. Or she may send it to Camero's, and Camero says, okay, well, you've got two options here. You can go A or B. When we reconvene, we vote on A or B, and we move forward, and that keeps it pretty simple.
Okay. I have a question, a philosophical question for you. With regard to giving this a voice, what is the message that you want that voice to deliver?
When I talk about a voice, I think I'm really talking about a consistency in writing, style and language.
Okay. We can make that happen.
Not the message.
That's something that AI should be able to do for us if...
I don't trust AI.
Submit the document, and let's see what it does.
Okay.
But in any case, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
Consistency in style.
I do, too. I think we can make that happen.
Anything else, then, on the landscape? So we're not going to schedule another meeting. We're going to communicate with Camero's. They're going to get us a draft back. You can send it out to us, and then we will each individually review and send comments to planning staff.
Yes, and we will get that back out just as soon as we get it from them.
Very good.
Yep.
In that case, Mr. Chairman?
I know where you're going, Mr. Ramek.
I second it if you're moving.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion?
So moved.
I beg...